I call to order today's meeting of the Boston City Council. Viewers can watch the council meeting live on YouTube at Boston.gov/city-council-tv. At this time, I ask my colleagues and those in the audience to please silence their cellphones and electronic devices. Also pursuant to Rule 42, I remind all in this chamber that no demonstration of approval or disapproval from members of the public will be permitted. Thank you. Did we lose quorum with? Okay. We haven't done yet the, done the roll call, so I'm hoping that someone will walk in. Right before, he's coming back in, okay. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Counselor Braden.
Yes, here.
Counselor Braden, here. Counselor Coletta Zapata. Counselor Durkin.
Here.
Counselor Durkin, here. Counselor Fitzgerald.
Here.
Counselor Fitzgerald, here. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, here. Counselor Louis Jen.
Here.
Counselor Louis Jen, here. Counselor Mahia. Counselor Murphy.
Here.
Counselor Murphy, here. Counselor Peppin.
Here.
Counselor Peppin, here. Counselor Santana. Counselor Weber. Counselor Varell. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, a quorum is present.
Thank you. I have been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. Now it is my pleasure to introduce this week's clergy, Reverend Father Alexandros Pretorian of Saint Nictarius Greek Orthodox Church in Rosendale, who will be providing our invocation invited by Counselor Peppin. Madam Clerk, did you also get Counselor Coletta Zapata?
Yeah, I'm under it.
Counselor Coletta Zapata is present and with us.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Peppin, you have the floor alongside Father Pretorian, and after the invocation, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Counselor Peppin?
Good afternoon, council colleagues. I am honored to have a newly presiding priest of Rosendale's beloved Saint Nictarius Greek Orthodox Church, Reverend Father Alexandros Pretorian. Born in Bucharest, Romania of Greek and Romanian descent, Father Alex comes to Saint Nictarius from his previous position at the Holy Trinity, Holy Trinity Greek Orthodox Church in Fischburg, Massachusetts. Father Alex began his service at the Orthodox Seminary in Bucharest, where he studied and graduated with honors. In 2002, he was admitted to the School of Theology in Bucharest for his undergraduate studies. After two years of strong grades, he competed for and successfully obtained a scholarship from the Greek Ministry of Education to continue his studies in Athens at the University of Athens School of Theology in their Department of Scientific Theology. As he approached the end of his studies, Father Alex was ordained to the diachonate and priesthood of the Greek Diocese of Athens. He continued his training at the Archdiocese Institute of Ministry focusing on youth, family, and modern methods of pastoral care. For his work and diligence, he was awarded the distinguished rank of protoperviter, which effectively means archpriest, by his eminent Archbishop of Athens and All-Greece Euronum Father Alex came to the Boston area in 2022 when he accepted a scholarship for postgraduate studies in theology at the Hellenic College of Holy Cross in Brookline. Father has studied ancient Latin, ancient Greek, and ancient Slavonic. He, of course, speaks Romanian and Greek, and also has proficient in many other languages. We're very lucky to have him in Rosendale Saint Nictarius Church. I mean, Rosendale is a staple of the Greek community. I'm sad that our clerk is not here today, who is a very strong supporter of this church. And I think it's also important to notice that, I didn't time this this way, but it's perfect because on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday is the Greek Food Festival in Rosendale at Saint Nictarius Church, which is a staple in my district, and I invite all my colleagues to show up. It's a beautiful event in his church. So now I'd like to turn it over to Father Alex.
Honorable members of the City of Boston Council, I want to thank you, and especially the Honorable Enrique Peppin for the invitation to offer the indoctrination at the beginning of this meeting. It is a great honor for me as the priest of the Greek Orthodox Church of Saint Nictarius in Rosendale, and for our faithful, proud residents of the city. Mayor Wu has recently stated that Boston's longstanding businesses serve as anchors for our residents and families, connecting our neighborhoods and communities across the city. Even before businesses existed, in our beautiful capital of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the first colonists who founded the town established the first community of faith. By walking the Freedom Trail, one can see that Boston is built around many faith-based communities. Faith in God will always remain in the heart of the city, as it is deeply rooted in the hearts of many of its residents. In the city, whose stones still bear the echo of the first settlers' footsteps, we are confronted with the crisis as is our country. The challenge, however, is not located primarily in its visible manifestations in the economic instability, in the unbridled technological progress that places under question the very concept of human agency, but in something more profound, in an underlying condition that permits these phenomena to manifest with such destructive intensity. The diagnosis: the lack of peace and unity. The distortion of the concept of human completeness promotes isolation, exploitation, and environmental destruction. Man ceases to be conceived as a relational being, founded on a transcendent reality, and it's converted into an autonomous unit that claims its well-being at the expense of others and of the natural world. Integration is the pursuit of wholeness in every endeavor, whether of peacemaking, justice, restoration, or healing. Reintegration is the corrective measure necessitated by the breakdown of our humanity, which inevitably leads to the degradation of our environment and our communities. Those who do not care for their siblings will certainly not care for their home, their city, or their community. This is why we are now raising our hands in prayer to God and say, "Lord Jesus Christ our God, you are the source of life and peace in heaven and on earth. Pour out the grace of your peace on a world troubled by war and hatred. Estinguish the differences and hostility between humans, and pour into the hearts of all humility, peace, and goodness. Give help to the suffering, protection to the refugees and the homeless, comfort to the alienated and sorrowful, and give us all the will and strength to help, with all our hearts, anyone who suffers." You said blessed are the peacemakers, for they will be called children of God. Teach us to seek to acquire peace of heart and peace among peoples, for in the heart in which peace is found, there is no longer hostility, love of dominion or fear, but the consolation of the Holy Spirit, love of God and love of our neighbors. For this, we humbly pray to you, O Christ our God, for peace among the people in every country, in our country, and this city; for peace among peoples, and for the welfare of the whole world, that we may live in harmony, and we may work without hindrance, in deeds pleasing to you, glorifying the philanthropic love of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, now and ever, and through the ages of ages. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Counselor Peppin, and thank you for that wonderful invocation, Father, and congratulations again on your installment. Madam Clerk, could you please update the attendance record to reflect that Counselors Mahia and Weber are now present and with us?
Okay. Counselor Mahia and Counselor Weber, okay.
Okay. We are now on to the First Order of Business, which is the approval of the minutes from the meeting of September 17, 2025. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the minutes of the September 17 meeting are approved. We are now on to communications from her honor, the mayor. Madam Clerk, would you please read docket number 1690?
Docket number 1690, message and order for approval, an order authorizing the City of Boston to appropriate the amount of $2,500,000 for the purpose of paying the cost of feasibility, study, and schematic design associated with a project for the Root Batson Academy, formerly known as the John W. McCormick School, located at 315 Mount Vernon Street, Dorchester, Mass. 02125. This include the payment of all the costs incidental or related thereto, and for which the City of Boston may be eligible for a grant for the Massachusetts School Building Authority, BSBA. Said amount to be expended under the directions of the Public Facility Department on behalf of the Boston Public Schools.
Thank you. Docket number 1690 will be referred to the Committee on Ways and Means. Madam Clerk, can you please read dockets number 1691 through 1697?
Docket number 1691, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expand the amount of $1,998.370 in the form of a grant for the WIIOA Youth Program Grant awarded by the United States Department of Labor, passed through the Mass Hire Department of Career Services, to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant will fund a comprehensive youth employment program to serve eligible youth aged 14 to 24 who face barriers to education, training, and employment. Docket 1692, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expand the amount of $1,559.65 in the form of a grant for the WIIOA Adult Activities awarded by the United States Department of Labor, passed through the Mass Hire Department of Career Services, to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant would fund services to help job seekers access employment, education, skill training, apprenticeships, and support services. Docket 1693, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expand the amount of $1,044,35.67 in the form of a grant for the Wagner-Paisa Program awarded by the United States Department of Labor, passed through the Mass Hire Department of Career Services, to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant would fund the individual reemployment needs of unemployment, insurance claimant, as well as prevent and detect improper benefits payment, and application assistance for training and education resources and programs. Docket 1694, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expand the amount of $966,006 in the form of a grant for the WIIOA Dislocated Workers Grant awarded by the United States Department of Labor, passed through the Mass Hire Department of Career Services, to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant would fund a program to help dislocated workers get back to work as quickly as possible and overcome barriers to employment. Docket 1695, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expand the amount of $884,111 in the form of a grant for the One-Stop Career Center Grant awarded by Mass Hire Department of Career Services, to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant would fund comprehensive career services and resources to unemployed job seekers, such as reviewing job posting, career counseling, and job coaching, education, skill training, and job placement assistance. Docket 1696 was withdrawn. Docket 1697, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expand the amount of $107,334 in the form of a grant for the WIIOA Dislocation Workers Administration Grant awarded by the United States Department of Labor, passed through the Mass Hire Department of Career Services, to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant would fund individual career services and training services for dislocated workers to rejoin the workforce as early as possible and overcome barriers to employment.
Thank you. Dockets number 1691 to 1697 will be referred to the Committee on Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development, and as Madam Clerk stated, docket number 1696 was withdrawn. Madam Clerk, can you please read docket number 1698?
Docket number 1698, message transmitting certain information under Section 17F relative to the Boston Public Schools, docket number 1636, passed by the City Council on September 8, 2025.
Thank you. This docket, docket number 1698, will be placed on file. We are now on to reports of public officers and others. Madam Clerk, can you please read dockets number 1699 to 1716?
Docket 1699, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Andrea Henley as Acting Executive Director of People and Culture, effective September 15, 2025. Docket 1700, notice was received from the mayor of an appointment Antonio Salvador PSYD as a member of the Black Men and Boys Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2028. Docket 1701, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Hassan Mohammed as a member of the Black Men and Boys Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2028. Docket 1702, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Allison Covahou as a member of the Black Men and Boys Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2028. Docket 1703, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Lawrence Justice as a member of the Black Men and Boys Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2028. Docket 1704, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Malik Aziz as a member of the Black Men and Boys Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2028. Docket 1705, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Sharif Smith as a member of the Black Men and Boys Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2028. Docket 1706, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Richard Kelly Cameron as a member of the Black Men and Boys Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2028. Docket 1707, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Jarrell Ferguson as a member of the Black Men and Boys Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2028. Docket 1708, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Maddy Kud as a member of the Black Men and Boys Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2028. Docket 1709, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Dr. Rufus Chafrock as a member of the Black Men and Boys Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2028. Docket 1710, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Rudy London as a member of the Black Men and Boys Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2028. Docket 1711, notice was received from the, from the city clerks in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979, action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of April 9, 2025. Docket 1712, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting on August 27, 2025. Docket 1713, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting on September 10, 2025. Docket 1714, communication from Counselor Flynn in opposition to Bill S. 1393, an act relative to preventing overdose deaths and increasing access to treatment. Docket 1715, communication from Counselor Flynn regarding community opposition to Plan Downtown. Docket 1716, communication from Counselor Durkin regarding the federal government decision to cancel the $20 million Roxbury Resilient Corridors Grant.
Thank you. These dockets will be placed on file. It looks like Counselor Flynn would like to speak on a communication. Counselor Flynn, you have two minutes to speak. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to speak on docket 1715, and that was regarding the Plan Downtown. I want to keep my colleagues posted that I testified with my constituents in person and in writing at the BPDA Board in opposition to Plan Downtown. I was also with South End residents, Back Bay residents, Beacon Hill, Downtown Boston, Bay Village, Chinatown residents as well. There were several other elected officials that spoke out against the proposal, also including Counselor Murphy, Representative Aaron Michaelowitz, and Rep. Jay Livingston as well. City residents and members of Plan Downtown Boston continue to emphasize their frustration that the latest amendment to allow towers 500 feet in height close to Boston Common and Public Garden was another departure from previous versions of the plan. A key area my constituents highlighted is that the plan fails to meet on-site affordable housing, which would not only provide access to the workforce, middle market, and income-restricted units we so desperately need. It would also provide much-needed foot traffic to the core of the city that our small business community has lacked since the outset of the pandemic. Residents felt they were not heard or respected during the community engagement process. Several of, several of my city councilors spoke in favor of it. District city councilors and at-large city councilors, many of them didn't speak about their opinion on this issue. I continue to believe that residents of a neighborhood must be heard and respected regarding what takes place there. That did not take place in this process. It's about respect for the neighborhood.
All right, thank you. That's your time. Thank you. And Trish, I want to say thank you for filling in today, and thank you, Madam Clerk. We are now on to matters recently heard for possible action. Madam Clerk, if you could please read dockets number 0323 and 1618?
Docket 0323, order for hearing to discuss the impact of Cory on access to employment and other opportunities. Docket 1618, hearing order regarding immediate reform to background checks, sex offender screening, and ongoing stability review for City of Boston hiring and employment.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Weber. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. On Monday, September 22, the Committee on Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development held a hearing on two dockets, dockets 323 and 1618, which, the 323 dealt with expanding employment opportunities for those with criminal records, and 1618 dealt with general hiring practices where it concerns individuals who have criminal records, you know, hiring by the City of Boston. The hearings were sponsored by Counselors Flynn, Murphy, Mahia, Peppin, and Fitzgerald, and were referred to the Committee on January 29 and August 27. I'd like to thank my colleagues, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Braden, Counselor Murphy, Counselor Durkin, Counselor Mahia, Madam President Louis Jen, and Counselor Coletta Zapata for attending. The committee also receives an absence letter from Counselor Varell. I'd also like to thank the administration, Chief People Officer Alex Lawrence, Chief of Human Services Jose Maso, and Senior Labor Advisor Lou Mandarini for their participation as well, and testimony. We had a second panel of advocates, which I'd also like to highlight, that was Mac Hudson from Prisoners Legal Services, Aaron Manning from Project Place, and Matteo Filippi from Boston Project Rebound and Full Gospel Businessmen's Fellowship of Greater Boston, who I thought provided valuable testimony on the second panel. During the hearing, we, we talked about, and we heard about, the balance between the need to provide opportunities for returning citizens and those with criminal records, and balancing that need with the need for public safety. We heard from the administration about the procedures for hiring and the need for a case-by-case approach when it comes to determining if an individual's criminal record makes them unfit for a particular job. We also heard from the advocates who talked about the second sentence someone serves. That's, you know, you, you're found guilty in court, you go to prison, you serve your sentence, you come out, and then you start serving your second sentence where you find it very difficult to find a job, housing, and, you know, how we can remove the barriers to, to people after they get out of prison. And we also heard how one of the surefire ways to, to raise the recidivism rate is to ensure that people who leave prison can't find jobs or housing, and so they, they asked for, you know, you know, an approach that gives people who with a criminal record a fair shake when it comes to jobs. It was great getting their perspectives, and I think, you know, I, and I'd like to thank my colleagues who attended and asked great questions, you know, found that it was a meaningful conversation. As chair of the Committee on Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development, my recommendation is that this docket, or these dockets, remain in committee. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Oh, sorry. You, sorry, you now have the floor. Yeah. Good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to say thank you to Counselor Weber for chairing an important discussion, and thank the administration panel, but also the testimony and the, the testimony from the public and from the community that really is a critical part of this, this discussion. I believe there has to be a, an important balance of ensuring that when we do hire someone in the City of Boston, that we do conduct a background check, especially if that person is working with children or in the public. I do believe, and many people disagree with me, but I do believe a Level 3 sex offender disqualifies someone from working for the City of Boston, in my opinion. But I also know that we have to support our returning citizens. This is what I did as a probation officer for eight years. I worked on this issue and helped returning citizens get into employment and training, accessing mental health counseling, recovery services, and this is a subject I'm going to continue to work on. Again, I want to say thank you to Counsel Weber. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any of the other sponsors? No? Okay. Thank you. And I want to thank you, Counsel Weber, for holding a really great hearing. I want to thank the administration for their wonderful insight and a great, great advocate panel that continues to challenge us to do the best we can for everyone among us. These dockets will remain in committee. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket number 1411?
Before that, can we amend the record?
Oh, sorry, apologies. Madam Clerk, could we please amend the record to reflect that Counsel Santana is now present and with us?
Okay.
Do we have everyone? Did I get everyone?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket number one? So dockets number 0323 and 1618 will remain in committee. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket number 1411?
Docket number 1411, message and order for your approval and order to adopt the local license conversion as a local option in the City of Boston.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Coletta Zapata, the chair of the Committee on Government Operations. You have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. Docket 1411 is a local option provided under Mass General Law, Chapter 138, Section 12D, upon acceptance of which municipalities may allow wine and malt licensees to trade in that license for a non-transferable all-alcohol license under the that license for a non-transferable all-alcohol license, under the condition that the local board holds a hearing and votes, and the state board also approves the category change, and the upgrade does not increase the total number of licenses allotted for the city. I want to shout out Chairman Aaron Michalowicz, whose provision this was during the negotiations last year of the formal petition that we had sent up. This committee held a hearing on Monday, September 22, to discuss this docket. The committee heard testimony from panelists Shigun Idouw, Chief of Economic Opportunity and Inclusion, Kathleen Joyce, Executive Director of MoCal, and Danny Green, Executive Secretary of the Licensing Board for the city of Boston on behalf of the administration. The panelists reviewed the current landscape of liquor licenses in the city of Boston. Some licenses are restricted by zip code, neighborhood, or Main Street district designation, and some are unrestricted and transferable. Following the most recent increase in 2024, the city is currently allotted 677 transferable all-alcohol licenses and has issued approximately 375 malt and wine licenses. The local option presented in this docket would be another tool in the economic toolbox for local restaurant owners to possibly expand their business by trading in an existing malt and wine license for an all-alcohol one. The process for license conversion, should the local option pass, was explained as follows. Interested malt and wine licensees would submit a change of category application, which includes certification of good standing from the Department of Revenue and Department of Unemployment Assistance, approximately $470 worth of fees. The city's licensing board, upon approval of the application, makes a finding of public need and sends the application to the state's Alcohol Beverage Control Commission. Following the ABCC approval, the businesses trade in their malt and wine license, or whatever kind, or excuse me, of whatever kind, and receives a non-transferable all-alcohol license. Pursuant to the law, when the business no longer has a need for their license, it would return to the pool from which it originated from. The administration pledged their commitment to expediting the conversion process for all interested businesses and to do an outreach and engagement plan to ensure that businesses across the city are informed about the options available to them. Public testimony was received in support of the local options, option, with businesses testifying to the positive impact an all-alcohol license would have on their operations. Concerns were raised about the limitations of the local option to non-transferable all-alcohol licenses. While the local option does not allow the city to alter those terms, the committee discussed with the administration possible ways to alleviate the burden for businesses of trading in a license held as an asset under these conditions, such as technical assistance, the commercial acquisition program, and expiration of tax benefits at the state level. The local option provides an immense new opportunity for businesses to expand their alcoholic offerings, as previously all-alcohol licenses could only be obtained through a pool of existing licenses, which were rarely available. The local option reasonably expands opportunity to small businesses across the city to help them increase profit margins and compete in the industry, but does not take away existing assets away from those who wish to keep them. So as Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, I recommend moving this listed docket from the committee to the full council for discussion and formal action. And at this time, my recommendation is that this matter ought to pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Coletta Zapata. Would anyone like to speak on this matter? The chair recognizes Council Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I attended the meeting. I want to say thank you to the chair for conducting it. I did ask the administration panel for some follow-up information so it could help me make a better decision when the vote did come. I didn't realize it was going to come up this week. But I did ask for specific questions from, I believe, Danny Green. I haven't received that information yet. I don't know if the chair has received it or not, but I also wanted to highlight there was only a handful of city councilors at the hearing, and it was an informative hearing, but the city councilors that weren't here really missed a lot of good information that was put out on this, whether you supported or you were against it, but it's really difficult to make an informed vote or decision without actually being here and listening to the discussion, engaging in the discussion. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Council Coletta Zapata, if you'd like to respond through the chair, as the chair, you may. Oh, I'm slow to the draw this morning. Council Coletta Zapata, you may.
Thank you, and thank you to my colleague for his great questions during the hearing. So we did receive that information this morning. I believe the one point of information that you had asked for is a breakdown by neighborhood of how many existing malt and wine licenses we have that are non-alcohol and, sorry, that are non-transferable. Citywide is 357. In your district, it's 89. You did receive that information this morning, and again, I think earlier in the afternoon. I will just say that as a local option, we do this quite often, where the proposal is pretty straightforward, and it allows us to unlock the opportunity for Boston to share in opportunities that are seen throughout the Commonwealth, at least for this one. For me, this proposal is pretty straightforward. We held a hearing, and I trust my colleagues, while I can't police their attendance, I trust my colleagues to read the material and to go with whatever decision they feel is right. So I'm ready to move this forward in my prerogative as chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The chair recognizes Council Durkin. You have the floor.
Thank you so much. I just want to thank Chair Coletta for the hearing. I know I did host a hearing last week, and I was the only counselor that attended, so I share, you know, in Council Flynn's, you know, questions about people attending hearings, but I also understand that there are things in the community that are taking place every single day, and because I represent a different district than everyone about the at-large counselors, I know that it wasn't personal. It was just that, you know, that folks weren't available. So I'm ready to vote yes, and I was really pleased to hear at the hearing that there are some folks from my district that are considering this. So, and given that the licensing board said they could move quickly, I want to give those local businesses the opportunity to move as quickly as possible with something that can help their local business. So I actually am a cheerleader for local businesses in my district. That's important to me. It's a core part of what I do, so I'll be voting yes.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Council Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did receive this information. My staff told me at 11:52 this morning. I will be honest, I didn't get a chance to review it from 11:52 to the start of the 12 o'clock meeting. I would like the opportunity to review it. I would like to do my due diligence. I'm not expecting we're going to not have the vote today, but is it possible to give me a little bit of time and give me an opportunity to review that data?
Through the chair, through the chair, if you'd like to respond, you may.
Thank you for asking. Just respectfully, I'm going to move forward with the vote. The information that you received says that there's 89 restaurants in your district. I don't know how that would change any decision-making, but I'm going to move forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Would anyone, is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? I just want to thank Council Coletta Zapata for hosting this hearing. As I said yesterday, was it yesterday or the day before, I came in early and asked my one question and had to leave, but it was great to hear from the local restaurants who really want this as an option to improve their business margins, to be able to provide culturally rice wine to people who come to their restaurants for events. And like the Chief of Economic Opportunity stated, this is really a business decision that each business will have to make. And so I think, Council Coletta Zapata, there was actually one question from someone in your district, and I look forward to working with you to make sure that we address all of those issues, but I want to see us having more local options. I want to thank the State House for pushing this forward, for making this possible, and I'm very much in support of this. I think it builds on a lot of the work that this body has been doing since my first term, last term, to make liquor licenses more readily available to our small businesses in our neighborhoods. So I'm really excited about this opportunity, and our restaurateurs also stated their excitement. So thank you. Would anyone else look to speak on this matter? Council Coletta Zapata, the Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 1411. Madam Clerk, could you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket 1411. Council Braden?
Yes.
Council Braden, yes. Council Coletta Zapata?
Yes.
Council Coletta Zapata, yes. Council Durkin?
Yes.
Council Durkin, yes. Council Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Council Fitzgerald, yes. Council Flynn?
No.
Council Flynn, no. Council Louis Jen?
Yes.
Council Louis Jen, yes. Council Mejia? Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Murphy, yes. Council Peppin?
Yes.
Council Peppin, yes. Council Santana?
Yes.
Council Santana, yes. Council Weber?
Yes.
Council Weber, yes. Council Worrell? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and affirmative.
Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 1411 has passed. Madam Clerk, would you please read docket number 0766?
Docket number 0766, order extending and enhancing protections for tenants facing displacement due to condominium or cooperative conversion in the city of Boston.
Thank you. The chair recognizes, thank you, the chair recognizes Council Coletta Zapata, Chair of the Committee on Government Operations. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. We held an incredible hearing yesterday through the committee, and I want to thank Council Braden for her leadership in bringing this forward, and every single city councilor before us, all of our predecessors, who worked diligently, dating back to 1983, 2019, Zacom, 2021, Lydia, and Council Arroyo, everybody, Council Flynn for their work on this in years past. This is ensuring that the city of Boston is aligning with the Affordable Homes Act as it relates to condo conversion. We heard from Sheila Dillon, Chief and Director of Mayor's Office of Housing, Karina Oliver Milchman, Director of Policy Development and Research at the Mayor's Office of Housing, and Mac McGrath, a longtime advocate and access, access to justice fellow at Greater Boston Legal Services. I was joined by Councilors Braden, Flynn, Fitzgerald, Mejia, and Murphy. Kathy Brown, Executive Director of the Boston Tenants Coalition, was also there to provide testimony and support of the effort to make this ordinance even more effective. The last ordinance, or the ordinance amended in 2021 currently covers buildings with four or more units and requires a 12-month notice period for tenants and provides tenants with the right of first refusal and relocation benefits ranging from $10,000 to $15,000. The amendments proposed align with recent amendments to state law passed under the Affordable Homes Act and would expand protections to non-owner occupied buildings with two or more units, increase the general notice period from one to two years, and extend the timeline required for a tenant's right of first refusal. At the hearing, many council members emphasized the need for timely action and further discussions on expanding protected classes and improving enforcement. The Mayor's Office of Housing shared that expanding the ordinance to two or more unit buildings that are non-owner occupied is crucial to ensuring 97% of rental units are protected. Tenants of smaller buildings are often the most in need of protections, as 91% of units lost in condo conversions come from low-income areas of Boston. Counselors asked a variety of questions regarding the look-back period for displaced tenants and expansions for protected classes. We talked about a central implementation challenge within the operational systems of MOH. We also discussed several policy considerations regarding protected classes and how to ensure that they are, have the appropriate staff capacity within MOH. Fifth, there was another discussion about first-time home buyers, so trying to figure through that out through the working session. And I think with that, I'll leave the rest of the comments for the lead sponsor, Council Braden, but just want to thank everybody again for their participation and for such a great conversation. I'll keep this in committee. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Council Braden. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Council Coletta Zapata, for facilitating this incredible conversation we had yesterday. This ordinance is already on our books. It will expire at the end of December, and this is a, to bring us into alignment with the legislation at the State House, I feel this is a really timely conversation to have. Protections for low-income, low- and moderate-income tenants, elders older than 62 years, and folks with disabilities were the primary protected classes in the existing ordinance. I know we had some conversation about how we might expand that, and I think it was a very good start to the conversation, and I look forward to getting into the details a little more in a working session going forward, and I would hope that we could move this forward in a timely way and have it pass by the end of the year. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Braden. This docket will remain in committee. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket number 0322?
Docket number 0322.
Oh, sorry. Council Flynn, was that on Councilor Braden's docket? Apologies, Madam Clerk. Council Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also highlighted during the discussion about including veterans as a protected class. They are classified as a protected class, and I want to make sure that they are added into this conversation. If they are added into this conversation, it's likely that I will support this, but I do want to make a point that veterans are a protected class, and at times, they are not included like they should be under the law. So I think, I do think it is important to recognize veterans as we discuss this proposal as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay. Council Coletta Zapata, is this on this?
Yeah.
Okay. Council Coletta Zapata, and then we're moving on. Council Coletta Zapata?
Thank you. I just want to highlight that we did discuss this, and, you know, we're talking about potential support here, and I just want to be clear, it was mentioned many, many times in this hearing that the enabling legislation was passed in 1983, and as it stands now, the only protected classes are the elderly, the disabled, low- and moderate-income populations. So if we want to include veterans, we also talked about families with children, folks that have been in a unit for more than five years, potentially even undocumented folks. Some of them are part of that broader umbrella of folks who are low, low and moderate income, those who are disabled, might include some veterans and others, but if we want to do that, there's going to have to be an accompanying piece of legislation. It wouldn't happen through this ordinance, so I just wanted to be clear about that. But I do look forward to working through this and definitely exploring it through the working session. Thank you.
Thank you. This docket will remain in committee. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket number 150322?
Docket number 0322, order for hearing to discuss ways to ensure operation of 911 system and contingency plans in case of a 911 system outage.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Council Santana, the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice held a public hearing on docket number 0322 on Tuesday, September 23, 2025, to discuss ways to ensure operations of the 911 cost system and contingency plans in case of a 911 system outage. This matter was sponsored by Councilors Ed Flynn and Council Murphy, and we were joined yesterday by Council Flynn, Council Murphy, and Council Fitzgerald. We also received a letter of absence from Council Peppin and Council Worrell. The committee had testimony on behalf of the administration from James Houley, who is the Chief of EMS, Chris Walsh, Deputy Superintendent of the Technology Services Division, Commander of the Bureau of Administrative Technology with the Boston Police Department, Christopher Mark Nussus, Director of the Operations Division of the Emergency 911 Boston Police Department, Christopher Burke, Deputy Chief of Boston Fire Department, Robert Barnes, Deputy Superintendent of EMS, and we also heard from Jason Yuckins, who is the President of the EMS Union. I want to thank the panelists, members of the public, and my colleagues for their participation in yesterday's hearing, and again, thanks to Council Flynn and Council Murphy for sponsoring this hearing. I'm sure they'll have a few words to think there was a very insightful conversation about how our different departments are working together, how our old systems here in the city of Boston and our new systems are still upkeeping for our safety, and I think it was a extremely insightful conversation. As Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, it is my recommendation that this docket should remain in committee at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Council Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to recognize and say thank you to Council Santana for conducting and chairing an important discussion about emergency 911 operations at the Fire Department, at the Boston Police Department, at Boston Emergency Medical as well. At this hearing, we learned a lot about how these three departments interact with each other during a problem, during a crisis, but also how they are overcome, or how they're able to overcome obstacles in their way. One of the issues I focused on as a district city councilor is during an emergency or when technology does break down, how do we communicate effectively with non-English-speaking residents, specifically Cantonese-speaking residents, because I represent a large Cantonese community. I want to make sure that my constituents are part of the discussion, part of the process, and I highlighted the importance of when there is a breakdown in communication, that is, it is important to interact with so many different groups that may not speak English, Spanish-speaking, Cantonese, others, Vietnamese. But I also highlighted that But I also highlighted that it's also important to support residents that might not have the necessary technology like we are so fortunate to have. Many residents in public housing also deserve to be part of this process and discussion, and I want to say thank you to Counselor Santana for ensuring that that is part of the discussion, and that's what's important to me, is making sure residents that really don't have a voice are able to weigh in on an emergency and interact with the police, fire, and EMS. We also highlighted the importance of the Boston Fire Department call box that you see at various neighborhoods across the city. If there is an emergency and you can't use your phone, or the phone system is down, you also can pull the box, and there will be an immediate response from the Boston Fire. That's important to know, especially when we see accidents as well. It may seem like obsolete technology, but it's critical, it's important, it needs to stay. We need to support Boston Firearm, and we need to support all our 911 first responders that take these calls at Boston Fire, Boston Police, EMS. In my opinion, they are unsung heroes in the city of Boston. They deserve respect. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Murphy. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to the Chair for hosting what I thought was a very informative hearing yesterday. We filed this back in January of this year after the incident that had happened the previous summer back in 2024, when we remember the system went down statewide, so it was great to see such a strong panel. Thank you to the administration for sending the people we needed to ask the questions that we definitely got answers to from EMS, Fire, and Police. And Counselor Flynn mentioned it, but it's important to also include our fire alarm team and our dispatches as our first responders who show up every day, and also a reminder that we can't cut corners when we're making sure they have the tools they need to do their job effectively. The fire boxes are important. Also learned at this hearing that the direct line that you can call right into if this was to ever happen again is an important resource, and how the comms team did work together and all the different departments to make sure people knew that day if there was an emergency, what we needed to do, and that they made sure the police and others were just out in the street trying to field any emergencies if needed. So an important conversation, and it's important that we also make sure that it's not just the cars and when we talk about the Fire Department, making sure they have the correct equipment, that it's also the phone lines, that that's what connects our residents to our first responders coming out to save them. So looking forward to continuing to support any funding that may be needed, because we have learned from previous hearings also that EMS especially needs upgrades to their phone systems and their computer systems. So thank you.
Thank you. This docket will remain in committee. We are now on to motions, orders, and resolutions. Reminded to my colleagues that if you are the lead sponsor on our docket, you have three minutes to speak on the docket. And, oh, am I missing one? I am, indeed. Okay. Before we move on to motions, orders, and resolutions, going to go to Counselor Pepe. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket number 1570?
Docket number 1500, order to hold a meeting to interview applicants for the Community Preservation Committee.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Pepe. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This morning, we concluded our interviews for the open position on the Community Preservation Committee. In total, the committee conducted six interviews for the six highly qualified applicants between this morning and last Tuesday, September 16th. I do want to thank my colleagues for joining. I believe we were joined by Counselor Flynn, Fitzgerald, Weber, and Louie Jean was there, and Worell as well. These six interviews for the six highly qualified applicants went well. The interview process has now officially concluded, and once a decision has been made, as the Chair of the Committee, I will be filing a committee report in the next couple, coming weeks to put forth a recommendation to the body for approval. It will remain in committee for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Chair recognizes Counselor Flynn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank Counselor Pepe for an informative hearing this morning. It was wonderful to listen to that applicant, to that person that did apply for the position at CPA, but one of the things I highlighted, observing the CPA team for so many years, but they have exceptional staff and a director at CPA with Thadine Brown, who does a tremendous job, working with residents, working with her team, working with city officials, but working with the community especially in a very respectful way. The CPA is about bringing people together. It's about bringing neighborhoods together, focusing on affordable housing, historic preservation parks and rec, but also their office as well is also about bringing people together. So I want to especially say thank you to Thadine Brown for her professionalism and her team as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
This docket will remain in committee. We are now on to motions, orders, and resolutions. A reminder to my colleagues that if you are the lead sponsor, you have three minutes to speak on a docket. If you are a sponsor, co-sponsor, or if you are a colleague looking to speak on a docket, you have two minutes to speak on the docket. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket number 1717?
Docket number 1717, Counselor Fitzgerald offered the following: Home rule petition for special law regarding an act relative to the wave of the maximum age requirement for Police Officer Luisa Fernandez.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Fitzgerald. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Luisa Fernandez is 44 years old and has been living in Dorchester for over 20 years. Luisa took the Civil Service Exam on March 15, 2025, and begins orientation, began orientation on Saturday, September 20. She is fluent in Spanish, Portuguese, and Cape Verde and Creole, which will help our police department better serve all residents of the city. I'm hoping to suspend and pass this home rule so we can get it to the State House for passage, and Luisa can join the Boston Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Madam Clerk, please add Counselors Braden, Coletta Zapata, Durkin, Flynn, Murphy, Pepe, Santana, Weber. Please add the chair. Counselor Fitzgerald, suspension of the rules and adoption of docket number 1717. Madam Clerk, could you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket 1717. Counselor Braden?
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Coletta Zapata?
Yes.
Counselor Coletta Zapata, yes. Counselor Durkin?
Yes.
Counselor Durkin, yes. Counselor Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Counselor Fitzgerald, yes. Counselor Flynn?
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Louie Jean?
Yes.
Counselor Louie Jean, yes. Counselor Mejia? Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor Pepe?
Yes.
Counselor Pepe, yes. Counselor Santana?
Yes.
Counselor Santana, yes. Counselor Weber?
Yes.
Counselor Weber, yes, and Counselor Worell. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. 10 and affirmative.
Thank you. This docket has been adopted. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket number 1718?
Docket number 1718, Counselor Santana offered the following: Order for hearing regarding legalizing accessory dwelling unit, ADUS, in every neighborhood in the city of Boston.
The Chair recognizes Counselor Santana. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to add Counselor Pepe as an original co-sponsor.
Counselor Pepe is so added. Counselor Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Bostonians have consistently ranked housing affordability as one of their top policy concerns, and for good reason. Housing costs are well over double the national average. Accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, are a form of affordable housing that address specific community needs, but they're not yet by right across Boston. Holding a hearing would allow us to explore legalizing ADUs by right across the city, and in doing so, expand our residents' access to this housing option. ADUs are small homes built inside or alongside a main home. They are especially important for elderly residents hoping to Asian place alongside their family rather than in expensive retirement homes, as well as for young adults who want to further have independence while residing at home. ADUs offer both of these groups privacy and support while offering a less costly form of housing than a traditional home or apartment. Beyond the low-cost accommodation of family members, ADUs are also used by those seeking additional income through renting and those who wish to downsize while remaining on their property. Not only are ADUs useful in addressing specific community needs, but they're popular. According to the AARP, one in four homeowners 50 years or older would consider building one on their property. But because of the discrepancy between the city and state zoning, Boston is exempt from last year's statewide ADU law, making us the only city in Massachusetts where instead of being able to build an ADU by right, residents are subject to zoning code restrictions that make their construction complicated and expensive. Currently, only one Boston neighborhood has made ADU construction by right, Matapan, despite widespread support for adopting pro-ADU policies citywide. By holding a hearing, we'd be able to explore joining the rest of the Commonwealth and allowing our residents to access to ADUs by right. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Santana. The Chair recognizes Counselor Pepe. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to Counselor Santana for adding me as a co-sponsor on this important docket. Housing units continue to be on demand, and ADUs are just another tool in meeting our steep housing needs. Legalizing ADUs is just another way we can make it easier to increase our housing supply. Not only do ADUs bring more units to the housing market, it gives a chance for residents to have their family members close to them. I felt the biggest push to legalize or streamline the ADU process is for families to accommodate aging parents or children in need of a safe home. I have a resident in Hyde Park. She is a single mother who has been struggling with the ZBA process, and it demands on her time and wallet have been crucial. As a single mother who also houses her parents, an ADU would be a huge help to her family, allowing her children, who are now young adults, to stay at home in their own units. Legalizing these units is a great idea, and I look forward to the hearing. I also want to give a shout out to Matapan because the organizers there that worked on Plan Matapan, the Greater Matapan Neighborhood Council, the advocates that really pushed for this, we are seeing the results in Matapan, and it's a huge benefit that I think the entire city could really benefit from. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Pepe. I agree, and was very happy to support Plan Matapan for that very reason, especially for a place that has such high black homeownership that we want to preserve, and exactly what you said about making sure that our seniors have somewhere to live. So just want to thank you for elevating that. The Chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'm going to participate in this upcoming hearing when it does take place. I would ask if we're able to include the Boston Fire Department and someone from Inspection Services as well. I do want to make sure that if we do pass this, that it does receive the approval of the Boston Fire Department with these potential new units. My concern is, are we always going to have two ways for someone to get out of a particular, maybe a basement apartment, or a safe way in terms, a safe environment for fire codes? I think we have to ensure that we can't water down any codes that protect residents in their safety in an apartment or in a house, but fire codes and inspectional codes are there for a particular reason, and that's the safety of those in the building and for neighbors alike. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Durkin. You have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I just want to say I'm in full support of this conversation. I think it's so important that we have it. It is not a new idea. It is an old idea. It's actually in some of the original Back Bay zoning, but they allowed for ADUs for people that were working in the home. So essentially, if somebody was working at that home, they allowed for that, and the zoning code obviously is extremely outdated. So in parts of the Back Bay zoning, you know, it allows for ADUs in certain instances. It's important that people be able to maintain their property values. It's important that... There's so many aspects to this conversation, but one thing that hits home for me is obviously the cost of housing right now. This conversation really isn't about District Eight, so that's why I didn't ask to be the third, but I would love to be the third if there's still room. I do think it's so important that we... This conversation isn't just about District Eight, it's about the entire city, and it's about people really being able to make something and have people live with them, and I think it's a really important tool. As you all know, this has been allowed statewide, but the statewide doesn't override our zoning code, so this is really about doing what the state and the Lieutenant Governor and others who are pushing for housing are calling for. So in this way, we're a little behind as a city, and we need to work to get up to snuff with what the state is demanding of other municipalities. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Santana. Counselor Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. May I suspend Rule 12 and add Counselor Durkin as an original co-sponsor?
I should have thought that that's what you were raising for. Okay. Counselor Santana seeks to suspend the rules, add Counselor Durkin as a third original co-sponsor, seeing and hearing no objections. Counselor Durkin is so added. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Madam Clerk, please add Counselors Braden, Fitzgerald, Mejia, Murphy, Weber. Please add the chair. This docket, docket number 1718, will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket number 1719?
Docket number 1719, Counselor Mejia offered the following: Order for hearing to audit and review capital budget allocations and expenditures.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Mejia. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise today to call for a hearing to audit and review our capital budget allocations and expenditures. Every year, Boston invests millions into projects that affect the daily lives of our residents. These projects, new school buildings, upgraded infrastructure, span multiple years, and their costs and impacts can shift significantly over time. It comes to a point where we need to ask, are we spending wisely? Are our projects that we're funding staying on track with what was promised to our communities? Are we making the most of every dollar coming from our taxpayers? During our hearing auditing the city's procurement processes, we discussed the fact that the scope of projects can change over time. The city can pull out of contracts or amend them. It is important that the council regularly reviews the progress of capital budget projects, and I would be remiss to mention Madison Park, which now has no firm completion year ever since the city entered the process with the MSBA funding, delaying the project indefinitely. Our constituents care about these projects, and as elected officials, it is our responsibility to ensure our allocations are serving the public and are being used effectively, sustainably, and with full transparency. Both the council and the public should have a clear picture of where we stand, and how we're doing, and where we're going. So I'm really excited to host this hearing as part of our series of our post-audit committee and making sure that once the budget is approved, that we have a vehicle and a space and place to really analyze the numbers. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Madam Clerk, please add Counselors Braden, Coletta Zapata, Durkin, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Murphy, Pepe, Santana, Weber. Sorry, I'm kind of fast, and please add the chair. This docket, docket number 1719, will be referred to the Committee on Post-Audit, Government Accountability, Transparency, and Accessibility. Madam Clerk, can you please read docket number 1720?
Docket number 1720, Counselor Flynn offered the following: Resolution in opposition to safe injection sites in the city of Boston.
The Chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, may I add Counselor Murphy and Counselor Fitzgerald as original co-sponsors?
Counselor Murphy is so added. Counselor Flynn seeks to suspend the rules, add Counselor Fitzgerald as a third original co-sponsor, seeing and hearing no objections. Counselor Fitzgerald is so added. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I ask my colleagues to support my resolution in opposition to safe injection sites in Boston, to join not only myself, Counselor Fitzgerald, Counselor Murphy, but to join Boston residents, small businesses, nonprofits, especially in and around the mass and cash area, in the South End, in Roxbury, in the Andrew Square area of South Boston, and in Dorchester area around Clifford Park as well, to join in the opposition and speak in one voice with those who have endured years of public safety, public health, quality of life issues from the mass and cash crisis. On September 15, the Massachusetts Joint Committee held a hearing to discuss an act relative to preventing overdose deaths and increasing access to treatment, effectively promoting the use of safe injection sites. But we all know that just a few weeks ago, on September 4, many of my colleagues were at a hearing chaired by Counsel Fitzgerald at the Hampton Inn, where nearly 200 residents shared their experiences, and they talked about increasing and alarming public safety issues. These have now escalated to break-ins, people sleeping in residents' homes, sleeping in their cars, trespassing into their backyards to use as a bathroom to leave needles, assaults, violence, human trafficking. Many of you were there, and we saw neighbor after neighbor who were practically pleading with us. They said this situation has deteriorated significantly... They said this situation has deteriorated significantly with public drug dealing, public drug use, human trafficking, needles throughout the city. A little boy in my neighborhood, Mason, got pricked with the needle. He lives in the public housing development. Myself and Erin went down... Erin Murphy went down to see him and his mother and his father. In the final analysis, after all that public testimony, how could we go back to the community and say that safe injection sites are the right answer to address the crisis at Mass and CAS? Residents don't want us to enable additional harmful behavior to those battling addiction. They need recovery services. They need detox. Residents all week continued to write me about their experiences in Philadelphia. It's been a disaster there. The city council banned supervised injection sites 13 to 1. I'm respectfully asking my colleagues to support residents in and around the Mass and CAS area. Let's give them an opportunity to live a safe and healthy life, but more importantly, those suffering from substance use and alcoholism, let's get them into detox, let's get them into recovery. Recovery works. I've helped hundreds of people as a probation officer. I'm not giving up on them. Thank you, Madam Chair.
The chair recognizes Council Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Councilor Flynn, for adding me as a lead sponsor. Our city is at a breaking point in addressing the addiction crisis, and the last thing Boston needs is the legalization of a safe injection site. On September 15th, the Massachusetts Joint Committee on Mental Health, Substance Use and Recovery held a hearing on Bill S-1393, which would authorize safe injection sites. This is the wrong direction for Boston and for the Commonwealth. Neighbors across our city have been very clear. They are living with the daily consequences of unchecked, open-air drug use. Families find needles in their yards, parks, and playgrounds. Small businesses face break-ins and trespassing. Residents are fearful and frustrated, and they are calling on us for solutions. Just this past weekend at the Polish Festival, I did need to make a call to the outreach team, because in the field where there were hundreds of neighbors', kids', families' playing in the grass, there were several needles in the park right there. Earlier this month, at a council hearing held on-site at the Hampton Inn near Mass and CAS, nearly 200 residents and stakeholders spoke directly about these challenges. The overwhelming message was that Boston does not need safe injection sites. We need rail recovery opportunities, accountability, and a treatment-first approach. Boston already has some of the most extensive harm reduction programs in the country. Each year, tens of thousands of syringes and even crack and meth pipe kits are distributed as part of low-threshold outreach. Yet, despite this, our neighborhoods are overwhelmed by discarded needles and continued drug activity. Expanding this model into sanctioned sites for injection will only deepen the cycle of addiction and further destabilize our communities. The answer is not to normalize or incentivize drug use. The answer is to prioritize a recovery campus, expand treatment access, and make sure people struggling with substance use disorder have a rail pathway out of addiction. At the same time, we must stand with the residents, families, and small businesses who are bearing the burden of this crisis every day. For all of these reasons, I urge my colleagues to join me in opposing the placement of safe injection sites in Boston and to send a clear message that we are committed to recovery, safety, and accountability.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Fitzgerald, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. In broaching this issue, it's always good to lead with that we are here in compassion, empathy, and coming up with solutions that can help those addicted and those whose quality of life is affected, and achieving that balance between the two. We know that currently Bill S-1393, an act relative to preventing overdose deaths and increasing access to treatment, is up at the State House and had a hearing recently. While I don't know the timeline of that bill and its specific committee, and I do believe there will be some time, there are some concerns with a portion of it, such as allowing the use of SIFs, which is included in the bill, to move forward. Before we take that step, I would prefer to focus on filling in the gaps of the continuum of care, focus on the recovery and the public safety aspects of these issues. There are steps to take to save lives that can be made with the right investments along the continuum of care before we allow for spaces to consume illegal drugs. I co-chair a working group along with Representative John Moran, Kelly Young, Sue Sullivan of New Market, and Steve Fox of the South End Forum, that will provide recommendations around recovery, public safety, and judicial reform. Again, those three buckets are recovery, public safety, and judicial reform, that again should be the focus of addressing this issue with empathy and compassion. As Council Flynn said, Philadelphia, once set to be the first city in the U.S. to open an SIF, just last week did an all-but-total ban. San Francisco itself is clawing these services back, given its recent issues. So I think there's also time to look at what other cities are doing around this and seeing the impact. But finally, in discussing this, the first obvious question that comes to me anyway immediately becomes, where do we cite them? And as my colleagues formulate their position on this, I urge them to think of this. Would you champion this cause in your own district? Would you be there to lead and say, "We will take one on"? Because if you do not, all this will do is again centralize the services that is being offered, especially around the area of South End and my constituents. And again, that is what created this problem, is the dearth of services where people now flock to, and we are trying to decentralize it and take a regional approach. So if you are on the side, and once you formulate your opinion on this and you do think they are good, I not only hope, I expect for you all to be the champion in your own districts as well to provide this. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Kalata Zapata, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Of course, when I saw this on the docket, I immediately said I'm not a public health expert. So I requested information of those that I do trust and understand, have the expertise in this area, and those are medical professionals who have committed their life's work to researching this and discussing this, and has an adequate training in public health. What they had told me is, there's no doubt about it, and very similar to Councilor Fitzgerald's point, there needs to be some sort of reform, criminal justice reform, a holistic public health package that also includes a recovery campus. The overdose deaths are rising, and they are disproportionately affecting Black and Latinx residents. We know that this strains healthcare, drives costs, and contributes to infectious disease spread, including HIV, which is very, very serious. After reviewing what they had said, and I understand that there are dozens, I think there's 75 peer-reviewed articles on this, where potentially, potentially, and this is a long conversation, and one point I'm going to make is that there's a long way to go on this, but potentially OPCs prevent overdose deaths, they reduce disease transmission, they connect people to treatment, they lower healthcare costs, and do not increase crime. And potentially, Boston could save an estimated $4 million annually in downstream healthcare costs. There's also data that says that the city of Boston believes in harm reduction. 77% of people believe in harm reduction programs. 70% of Massachusetts voters could potentially support OPC legislation, and that's not just Boston, but that's Massachusetts. And again, we have a long way to go. So DPH, Department of Public Health, and BPHC, we need to assess, provide a readiness, the citing issues, plan evaluations, engage stakeholders, prepare infrastructure to pilot something like this. I think especially this week more than ever, it's important for all of us to realize how dangerous it is to maybe politicize public health matters. Pregnant women were told not to take Tylenol just recently this week, which is extremely dangerous if there's complications in utero, just the dissonance is drawing. So I would just say that this is another instance where it would behoove all of us to avoid oversimplifying complexed, nuanced, highly-studied medical issues.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Kalata Zapata. The chair recognizes Council Weber. Council Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, and, you know, obviously, this is a very important issue, and I thank my colleagues for highlighting it. I just, just a couple points. Number one is, you know, I'm going to be voting against this resolution, but I have advocated for low-threshold housing in my district, Lindia and Envision Hotel, just to name a couple. So this is, it's not a case of, well, you know, we don't want that in our neighborhood. We also talk about the Shattuck a lot in Jamaica Plain, and how to get that up and running and helping people. I'd also say that, you know, I wasn't at the hearing, but I reviewed the testimony, and the two most common complaints are, you know, having, watching people use drugs in public and the needles. You know, people have studied this issue. There's a ton of articles, and I think Council Kalata Zapata was referring to, there's a meta-analysis where academics review a number of articles written by other academics that's been published, and what all those articles found is that safe injection sites reduce the number of needles on the street, because you're going to a place where you're using the needle in that place, and they reduce public drug use, because you're using it in this location. You know, so all those other issues aside, you know, I think if we're really trying to help remove needles from the streets and get people to stop using drugs in public, this is one tool in the toolbox, and I just, you know, based on no hearing, no real discussion, I don't see a reason to support this resolution. Thank you.
The chair recognizes Councilor Durkin.
Thank you so much, Chair. I just don't believe this resolution is a good-faith representation of good public process, and I don't see how Boston weighing in on whether people in Cape Cod and Western Mass, if they think that's good for them. I don't really see how that... I don't see how us, as the biggest city in the Commonwealth, weighing in on this particular issue at this important juncture for the state and Commonwealth is a good idea. I personally haven't formulated a position on the issue, except for that, I believe public health experts. I have a letter from an MGB physician who's working on this issue, who is spouting very different talking points than the ones that we're hearing presented today. So, and in terms of citing anything in Boston, we have time. This is like not something that's even passed the State House, and I think when we talk about the decentralization of services in places like Mass and CAS, this is part of that decentralization, is moving things outside of Boston. I had a direct conversation with Lieutenant Governor about what the state could be doing on Mass and CAS, and what I think that, what the help that we need is. I'm doing, I think, for me, I'm doing the job, I think, is the role of a city councillor, which is, when you have an opinion, call those who can make a difference. And I just don't believe this resolution is a good-faith example of how we should operate in the city, both in terms of public process. I think if you're interested in weighing in against this legislation, you should go to the State House and testify at the hearing with your own personal position. And I, reading through this, just doesn't represent my beliefs, so I will be voting no.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Brayden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to my colleagues for bringing forward this resolution. I think the more appropriate terminology when talking about supervised injection sites is overdose prevention. These sites offer testing for substances that folks are going to inject. They can screen out for fentanyl. They offer clean needles, which, as someone's already mentioned, is very, very important in reducing the HIV infections and AIDS ultimately. The safe needle disposals, that'll take many more needles off the streets. There are access to recovery coaches and to connect people to healthcare and recovery support. So all told, you know, there's the, there's sort of like, this sort of balance, we talk about this a lot in this place. And in sort of, in aggregate, I feel that the benefits outweigh any potential disadvantages of having an overdose prevention site. And I think it's something, for those of us who have family members who are, have addictions, having a safe... We always are dreading the day when we get a phone call to say that they've had an overdose, that they've been exposed to fentanyl accidentally, and end up having an overdose that's taken their life. So I really do, I will be voting, I will be voting against this resolution and hope that, you know, this initiative taken at the state level will move forward and also take some of the pressure off Boston, because we do know that people come to Boston for services and to access to treatment, and also that we have an open drug market in the streets. But if there's safe, supportive overdose prevention sites in other parts of the state, I feel that will take pressure off the city of Boston. So thank you, and I will be voting no on this resolution.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Gerald, you have the floor.
Thank you. Just a couple of corrections. Council Kalata Zapata, I think you said overdose deaths were up. I would, I would, I think we'd both have to go check our stats, because from what I understand from the Boston Public Health Commission, it is down, and that's due to the use of NIKAN now that police officers have. So I think overdose deaths are down, which means what we're doing to help overdose deaths, to prevent overdose deaths, is working as the numbers are going down. However, there is still the public safety aspect. I do ever, I do, I did file a hearing on a regional approach to this issue, so along with folks that are saying that, you know, we do, we should talk to the state, Lieutenant Governor and others of other parts of the state taking, being involved, I completely agree. However, if and when this does come to pass, you know, I just think, again, I would remind people, I look forward to working with you all in sort of decentralizing those in the South End, and while I would prefer it to be outside of Boston, it's very likely that there will be many in Boston as well. And so I look forward to partnering with you in spreading that out all across the city. Thank you.
The chair recognizes Councilor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I brought this resolution here in good faith. Wasn't sure why I'm being criticized for bringing this here and not in good faith. Everything I've done in this body is in good faith. I've worked on this issue before as a city council, as a probation officer, and that's all I did for eight years, is help people get into recovery, help them get into detox, help them access mental health counseling and job training programs. That was my full-time job, just 50 yards from here. So everything I do as a, in my professional life, I do it in good faith. This is in good faith, because I have received calls from my neighbors asking about their loved ones in Mass and CAS. Many of, many of my colleagues probably have too. And what they want, one of the first things they want is to identify them, where they're at, then the second thing is, can we get them into treatment? Can we get them into detox? Can we get them into treatment? What about short-term recovery plans, long-term recovery plans? Are we supporting them? That's good faith. That's helping people. A mother with a child that has substance use challenge, they want their child into recovery. So I'm a little disappointed in the comment that I'm not here in good faith, because as a probation officer, someone that's worked in this field and helped people in recovery, that's all this is about, is helping people in need that are struggling, and we can't as a city turn our back on them. We need to support them. We need to get them into recovery, and at the same time, support our residents as well. It's also public safety. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is anyone else going to speak on this matter?
I just want to thank my colleagues who spoke so eloquently about the potential for decentralization, especially outside of the city of Boston, that this vote could have, and I just join you all in recognizing, and thank you, Council Brayden, for uplifting the language here, OPCs and the public health experts and their position, and I will be voting no on this resolution. Madam Clerk, could you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket 1720. Council Brayden. Council Brayden, no. Council Kalata Zapata.
No.
Council Kalata Zapata, no. Council Durkin.
Yes.
Council Durkin, no. Council Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Council Fitzgerald, yes. Council Flynn.
Yes.
Council Flynn, yes. Council Liu Jian.
No.
Council Liu Jian, no. Council Mejia.
No.
Council Mejia, no. Council Murphy.
Yes.
Council Murphy, yes. Council Pepe.
No.
Council Pepe, no. Council Santana.
No.
Council Santana, no. Council Weber.
No.
Council Weber, no. Council Verrill. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight votes in the negative and three in the positive. It did not pass.
Thank you. This docket has not passed. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket number 1721? And Council Brayden, can you please trade spots with me? Thank you.
I accidentally crossed it out, so what's this? Sorry. This one here? Yeah, yeah, sorry, I crossed it out. Madam Clerk, can you please read docket 1721?
Okay, docket 1721. Council Liu Jian offered the following: resolution recognizing October 1st, 2025 as October 1st, 2025 as Nigerian Independence Day.
Um, thank you, um, so much, uh, Madam Clerk and, um,
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Oh.
The Chair recognizes Council President Louie Jean. Madam President, you have the floor.
Thank you. Sorry, this is hard on this, you know. Okay. Um, I'm presenting this resolution to yet again raise the Nigerian flag here at Boston, uh, City Hall. We have a very large Nigerian population here. Uh, we have them where I live, in Hyde Park and in Council Pepe's, uh, district. We have them all around the city of Boston here. Um, our actual, but I gotta make sure I tell her about it. The Chair of the Boston Public Health Commission is of Nigerian descent, Dr. Basola Ojokutu, and so many others. Um, they are, uh, an exceptionally amazing, um, immigrant group here. Um, I've had the pleasure of growing up with many of them and celebrating Ibo Day, um, in Franklin Park over the years and recognizing so many of, uh, the community leaders who work really hard for, um, Nigerians here. Uh, we have a lot of talent, uh, whether it be Brenner Boy or more of our local talent here. And so next Wednesday, we will be raising the Nigerian flag here on the city, uh, at the, at, um, at City Hall. One of the things that makes me really excited to do that is two of the businesses that we'll have, uh, serving food will be Destiny African Market and Suya Joint. Um, and if you've been following the journey of Suya Joint in Roxbury, they've had, um, a lot of difficulties this year as a result of, um, ICE and ICE interactions, unfortunately. And we know so many of our small businesses are owned by immigrants in immigrant communities. But, um, we have moments to celebrate, um, some good news coming out for the owners of Suya Joint and for their family. And I know that next Wednesday will be even more meaningful and will be a time of jubilee for our Nigerian community and for our immigrant community. So I do hope that my colleagues join us right before the council meeting next Wednesday, um, to raise the green, white, green flag in celebration of Nigerian Independence Day. And, um, Madam Chair, before I sit, I would like to add Councilor Pepe as a second original co-sponsor. Thank you.
Councilor Pepe is so added. Councilor Pepe, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Madam President, for adding me as a co-sponsor. As you stated, I have a beautiful Nigerian culture community in my district. I actually grew, when I grew, grew up in Roseland, my next door neighbors were Nigerian. I mean, now as a city councillor, I get to have amazing, um, residents and also new businesses in the area. One of them being a new African market on Washington Street in Roseland just opened up. A lot of the products are from Nigeria. And then there's a, a very established restaurant on Belgrade Avenue in Roseland called Obosa. It's a beaut, it's an amazing restaurant, uh, that I really invite all of you to go visit. But just, I, I always love when we get to celebrate our different cultures in the city of Boston and the Nigerian one is one that we're also very proud of. So I look forward to the flag raising, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor, uh, Pepe. And would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Councilor Coletta, Councilor Durkin, Councilor Fitzgerald, Councilor Flynn, Councilor Mejia, Councilor, uh, Santana, Councilor Murphy, Councilor Weber, and please add my name. Uh, Council President Louie Jean seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 1721. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those, uh, all those opposed say nay. Uh, thank you. This docket, uh, 1721 has been adopted.
Thank you, and thank you, Councilor Braden. Okay, uh, before we move on to green sheets, would anyone like to add their name to a docket when they may have stepped out of chambers or would like to, um, put forward a motion to reconsider a vote? No? Okay. Uh, we are now moving on to green sheets. Would anyone like to pull anything from the green sheets? The Chair recognizes Council Murphy. Council Murphy, you have the floor.
Um, yes. Thank you, Madam President. Could I pull docket 0892? Sorry, it's last minute, but it's money from the AIDS Strong Committee and I was just communicating with the administration. Um, it would be the rest of the money needed for the initiative assisting residents. A small amount that I just want to suspend and pass. 0892.
It's totally okay, just that now, since the clerk didn't have, uh, heads up, she has, so you, Miss, Madam Clerk, take your time to look for the docket. It's 0892.
From what?
Yep.
0892.
From what committee?
The Committee on Strong Families, Women and Communities.
While they're looking it up, I can read, um, the information just to make sure my colleagues.
No, let's wait for her to read the docket into the record because I have to allow anyone to object if they would like to object to the green sheets.
Docket 0892, Message and Order Authorizing the City of Boston to Accept and Expand Amount of $137,753 in the Form of a Grant for the FY 2526 Retired Senior Volunteer Program Grant Awarded by the Corporation of National and Community Service to be Administered by the AIDS Strong Commission. The grant would fund administration for senior community service. Volunteers include in reimbursement for meals and travel expenses.
Thank you. Absent objection. The motion of the committee chair is accepted and the docket, docket number 0892 is properly before the body. Counselor, the floor is yours.
Thank you. The federal funding for the AmeriCorps Seniors RSVP program comes from AmeriCorps. The program peers people 55 and over who want to make a difference in their community with community organizations for impact-driven volunteer placements. Volunteers are partially reimbursed for meals and transportation and receive insurance coverage. Each grant extends from April 1st through March 31st. The city of Boston proposes to have 263 AmeriCorps Seniors RSVP volunteers who will assemble and distribute food to food insecure clients, provide food delivery, companionship, teach assist adults with ESL, prepare simple taxes, provide financial training and facilitate opiate education and prevention workshops in Boston. The primary focus areas of this project is healthy futures. At the end of the three-year grant, AmeriCorps senior volunteers will be responsible for 843 homebound or older adults and individuals with disabilities who will report having increased social ties, um, perceived social support. So I would assume we all agree that this is wonderful. Wish it was more money that we could be putting towards this, but, um, hope that my colleagues will suspend and pass so we could get these volunteers out into the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this docket? Council Murphy seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket number 0892. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This docket is passed. We are now moving on to late files. I am informed by the clerk that there are four late file matters. Two personnel, um, two personnel matters and one absence letter and one resolution.
Yes.
We will take a vote, um, to add the two personnel, um, and the absence letter onto the record. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. These dockets have been added to the record. Madam Clerk, could you please read the late file dockets onto the record?
Personal order, Council Louie Jean. Personal order, Council Louie Jean for Councilor Braden.
We will now take a vote on, um, these late file personnel matters. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Uh, these matters have passed. Madam Clerk, could you please read the late file absence letter?
Absent letter. Dear colleague, dear counselor colleagues, I regret that I would be unable to attend this week's city council meeting. My staff is watching the proceeding and I would review the vis, video footage. Sincerely, Brian Rurrell, Brian Rurrell, Boston City Council, District 4.
Thank you. Um, this late file absence letter will be placed on file. Um, Madam Clerk, Clerk, could you please read the late file resolution into the record?
Offered by Councilor Zapata. Resolution recognizing October as Italian-American Heritage Month.
Okay. Absent objection. This late file matter is added to the record. Um, Counselor Coletta Zapata, uh, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President, and I appreciate my colleagues' patience on this. We thought that we could file it next week for Wednesday because the flag raising is on Thursday, but events needed it today. So we're filing it with the late file. Um, and just really looking forward to celebrating all of the contributions of our Italian-American folks and populations. Thinking about my district in particular, East Boston, um, and the North End has been a, um, a beautiful community, rich in the, uh, history, the culture, the food, the art, the religion, all tied to, um, to Italy. And there's been about, uh, 26 million is, is the most recent count that I have, um, 26 million Americans of Italian descent. And, um, here in Boston, uh, in, in East Boston, North End, Brighton, Hyde Park and South Boston, they've, um, they've come and made a, a wonderful life here. And so we want to honor them. And I welcome everybody to the flag raising on October 2nd at 12:00 PM. We're going to have music. Hopefully the Elliott School kids are going to be there again to sing, um, a, a song in, in Italian. We'll have cannolis, we'll have espresso. It's going to be a, a great day. So look forward to seeing everybody there. Thank you.
Thank you. Lots of great flag raisings next week. The Chair recognizes Council Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to Councilor Coletta Zapata for bringing this forward. Just want to mention, as Council, the council mentioned, that I also have a large, um, Italian, Italian-American community in South Boston and grew up with them and know the incredible contributions they and their family have made to our city and our country. And many of them served in the US military, many, many of them served as schoolteachers, uh, police officers, uh, letter carriers, um, involved in our community. But Italian and Italian-American residents of the city of Boston have made an exceptional contribution and sacrifices to, um, to our nation. And I'm proud to call them friends. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Pepe. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to stand in support of this flag raising. Um, I know that Hyde Park was mentioned, but my district in general just has a very proud Italian, um, heritage as well, starting with one of our own state rep, Ralph Consavo and his family. Um, I think about the amazing institutions in my district as well. Think about Tony's Market. And then I also have a friendly competition with, um, Councilor Coletta, where the Boston Globe ranked the best Italian sub, and it's not in the North End. It's actually in Hyde Park. It's in Tutto's Italiano and in the readable portion of Hyde Park. So we're very proud of that and we will continue to brag about it. So I will be present at the flag raising and supporting. So, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Isn't that large, City Councilor? All the, all the Italian standards are great. Councilor Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, um, um, Councilor, uh, Coletta Zapata. Um, I always have to stand up and say, yes, Alston Brighton has a significant, uh, Italian community that goes way back. And many of them come from a place called San Donato. And folks like Fred Salvucci, who was the Secretary for Transportation, who was responsible for the Big Dig. Um, uh, we have, we have a, a, a really incredible contribution made by folks from the Italian community in Alston Brighton and across the city. So I look forward to the cannolis. And, uh, did you say espresso? Hey, perfect. So, uh, and we'll, we'll celebrate and honor the contributions of our Italian-American neighbors next week. I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Braden. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Madam Clerk, please add Councilors Braden, Durkin, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mejia, Murphy, Pepe, Santana, Weber. Please add the chair. Counselor Coletta Zapata seeks, uh, suspension of the rules and adoption of this, uh, late file docket. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This matter has been adopted. We are now moving on to the consent agenda. I've been informed by the clerk that there are no additions to the consent agenda. The question now comes on approval of the various matters contained within the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. Thank you. The consent agenda has been adopted. We are now on to announcements. Please remember that these are for upcoming dates and events. Uh, I want to say a happy belated birthday to my sister, uh, and happy birthday to Chastity Boeck, whose birthday is, um, 25th tomorrow. Um, to Council Fitzgerald, whose birthday is tomorrow. Happy birthday. And to Samantha Parachi in, uh, Counselor Coletta Zapata's office, whose birthday is on Friday. So happy birthday to, um, all the Virgos in the house. Um, if anybody has any announcements now is the time, if you'd like to make any announcements. No announcements other than Leos are the best, but, no. I see, Council Pepe, do you have an announcement? No? Okay. Council Pepe, you have the floor.
Just want to remind everyone again that the Greek Food Festival is this, uh, weekend from Friday, Saturday and Sunday at the St. Antares Church. It's a great event, great food, so invite everyone there. And technically, Council Fitzgerald is a Libra, not a Virgo.
Oh. Well, all I said was that Leos are best, so. But I said still stands. Uh, the Chair recognizes Council Fitzgerald. You have the floor.
Point made.
That's it? Okay. Oh, right, because I said Virgos. Okay. Um, the Chair recognizes Council Braden. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I'd love to invite you all to come celebrate in Alston Brighton this weekend. We have a big, big day on Sa, on Sunday. We have the Honan 5K Road Race. We have a street fair. We have the Alston Brighton Parade. And then we have a party in the park down in Oak Square. So it's going to be a lot of fun if you're in the neighborhood to stop by, but don't try and get too, anywhere too fast. There's a lot going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Braden. Uh, the Chair recognizes Council Durkin. You have the floor.
We have a big Beacon Hill and Mission Hill weekend ahead. Um, I just want to, again, if you guys are free on Saturday, please race me at the Mission Hill Road Race. It's really, um, Council Fitzgerald's family is very involved with this. So we're really excited to be a part of that and doing the water table. And then, uh, the Beacon Hill Civic Dinner Under the Stars is Saturday. And, um, on Sunday, we have Beacon Hill Civic, um, is doing their Hill Fest, which, please come at the beginning. There is a dog parade. It is beautiful and really adorable. So if you're interested in coming to Beacon Hill this weekend, uh, would love to see everyone on Sunday for the Beacon Hill Hill Fest. So, and, um, just one update. Um, I have been off my bike. You know, I gave everyone an update that people called me fat, so I got off my bike. I just wanted to update everyone that now I'm off my bike because my front wheel was stolen. So, um, so there's, there's all these updates with my bike, but, well, I'll be on my bike soon. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Durkin. Okay. Um, lots of food festivals. There's the Greek Festival, but there's also the Dumpling Festival happening this Saturday. Rosendale Village Main Streets is having it, um, Saturday, uh, Saturday night at Adams Park, Saturday late afternoon, and the Chester Park Community Fest. Um, and, yeah, so those are some other events happening this weekend for, in addition to the ones that my colleagues have uplifted. We are now moving on to memorials. Would anyone like to adjourn today's meeting on behalf of anyone who has passed? A former colleague of mine, um, asked that we, oh, the, the Chair, a, a former colleague of mine, uh, staffer of mine is asked that we adjourn today's meeting on behalf of Dr. Shirley Alexandra Tozzi Martinez, a migrant from Venezuela and doctor at St. Elizabeth's Hospital in Brighton, Tufts Medical Center and Brigham and Women's Hospital. She was loved by her community and passed away earlier this month. So, holding, um, Dr. Martinez's family in prayer and all of the lives, um, who she touched and, um, including, uh, former staffer assists now. Uh, the Chair recognizes Council Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A, a neighbor of mine in South Boston, a young man, Daryl Logan Alexander, um, passed away. My wife and I went to the wake last night, but he leaves a wife, Erin, and, um, two, two young children. Um, so his family, um, are in our prayers during this difficult time. He was active in South Boston youth sports and, uh, he was a wonderful neighbor to so many. And he was also a wonderful husband and, and father. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Um, and Council Flynn, did you state, is it Daryl Logan Alexander?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Council Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I'd like to uplift, uh, and name, uh, Victor Martinez, a merchant, um, from Ecclestone Square who, um, recently transitioned. Um, and, uh, we held a moment of silence today at an event that Council Weber and myself were at. And there was a moment of silence. He had been, um, the owner of Vitas, uh, Tailoring right on Ecclestone Street for over 40 years. Thank you.
Victor Martinez. Okay, thank you. Um, today we will adjourn our meeting in memory of the following individuals. On behalf of Council Flynn, Daryl Logan Alexander. On behalf of Council Mejia, Victor Martinez. On behalf of myself, Dr. Shirley Alexandra Tozzi Martinez. A moment of silence. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. The council is scheduled to meet again in the IONL Chamber on Wednesday, October 1st, 2025 at 12:00 noon. Reminder that we sent out an email yesterday about Latin Acts and Hispanic Heritage Month, October 15th, which we'll be celebrating two weeks from now. Um, thank you to my colleagues, central staff, the clerk and the clerk's office, and the council stenographer. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye. Aye. The council is adjourned.